Good evening. It's seven o'clock and we can start the meeting. I'd like to ask Pastor Jason Hooper to give us the opening prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, tonight, first of all, we come before you with heavy hearts as we continue to remember and mourn the loss of Queen Elizabeth II. And Lord, we just ask and pray your blessing upon her family and her citizens and that in the days and in the weeks ahead that you will just grant them your compassion and peace. We are grateful tonight for our time together here. We are grateful for our town and its citizens. We pray for them and we pray your continued prosperity, protection, and peace for them. We are grateful for our mayor, our council, our staff. And we pray your blessing upon them even tonight as they lead. May all things be done orderly and for your glory we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hooper. And at this point, I'm going to follow up on what Pastor Hooper introduces and ask everybody to actually stand up and have a one-minute silence for the passing of our queen. Any more? I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Any second?
Any favor? Item number four, approval of minutes of previous council meetings, starting with special meeting of council July 11, 2022.
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes of the special meeting of council for July 11, 2022.
Any favor?
Aye.
And the second is the approval of meetings for regular meeting of council of August 8, 2022. Motion, please.
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes of the regular council meeting of August 8, 2022.
Second.
Any favor?
Aye.
Closed meeting of council, August 17, 2022.
Go ahead, Ms.
I made the motion to approve the minutes of council closed meeting of August 17, 2022.
I'll second it.
Any favor?
Aye.
And finally, the special meeting of council, August 31, 2022.
I second it.
Any favor?
Aye.
Conflict of interest declarations. Anyone has any conflict to declare? No conflict declared. I move on to item six in the agenda, delegations. And you're going to talk to us about the alumni event for 2023. It's not here. We may have to defer that for later on. Moving on to general reports, general government report. Jason.
Thank you, your worship. General Government Report for the month of August. Month of September regular meeting. We've, with the passing of Her Majesty, Royal Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, we've entered a 10-day mourning period. Flags are at half-mast and a book of condolence has been set up for residents and area residents to sign at the Town Hall. And we put up a number of British flags on the main street as well. Canal Beach, much of the work at Canal Beach has stalled as we're waiting for a power hookup plan to be submitted to NV Power. Interior carpentry, plumbing, electrical work remains as the building has been built, but just that work remains. And a sidewalk as well around the building. Some of the finished work around the parking lot is pending as well. Industrial Park Expansion. We're seeking to determine a determination on the town cost, which is about 6.67% of the total, which gives a dollar amount of $40,020. We've had some discussions with RDC and ACOA and also discussion on possible municipal entity being established for industrial parks, so sort of a crown corp. We are looking at something as an option there. Hillcrest subdivision, the cut, the water line has been repaired. The road has been backfilled in where we will be compacting it in the next couple of weeks, well, next week or so, and have the road paved by the end of this month. The municipal doesn't need a highway plan. For Mount Pleasant Road, there's 155 meters of new sidewalk, curb and storm drain on the north side, and 230 meters of curb and catch basin on the south side. We expect this work to go to tender this week. The groundwater under direct influence study with our water system. Repair work was complete on Wealth III, as was brought up in that GUDI report. And the report, the draft version, has been submitted to the province. The Coastal Link Walking Trail, paving has been completed along with installation of ballards and barriers. Waypoint signage is expected to be installed this month. And it's a lot of use on the walking trail. The Eagles Nest over the coming months, we intend to address some of the vegetation growth around the Eagles Nest, the basin boat ramp. We'll also inspect and repair the stairs, which are likely going to need to be replaced next year. They're just have deteriorated. Seasonal closures, both the Splash Pad and Canal Beach are scheduled to close September the 19th, which is next Monday. So it's the final week for both of those facilities. Development Housing, the School Street, Carlton Street apartment construction has been put on hold due to some rising interest rates, as the developer stated. So he expects to pick that up in early spring. So we'll keep an eye on that. The lower bridge installation work with approval from the council and it's on agenda for tonight. We did have to do an adjustment on the gas tax plan and allocate additional, I think it was $20,000, around $20,500 of gas tax funds towards the work. Primary reason for that is that we did come over on the well number two improvements that we did. So it's about $20,000 short. There's, I believe, there's about $20,000 or $39,000 that's remaining in the gas tax account. Main Street, we're still waiting for some of the large cast iron flower pots, much like the ones we already have on Main Street. They said their delivery should be middle of next month. So we won't be using those this year. They'll probably just go straight to storage to be brought out next year. Resurfacing of the basketball and pickleball courts. This is something that's been, just like, I guess, a pickleball or basketball, it's been thrown back and forth, just trying to find some schedules that work out for both the contractors. Funde Fencing and Plexa Playtech, which is the resurfacer, both areas have received funding. We are still hopeful to have the work completed by the end of this month. If not, the schedule, and the schedule closes in, the work will have to be done in 2023. So I just met with Funde Fencing today. They're pretty optimistic that they'll have everything complete on their end. So we just need to get the resurfacing company in by the end of the month. The baseball field, town is looking to continue efforts improving the baseball field. The field has recently become active, even tonight, with the Funde High varsity team. So they'll be using the field as their home team. Special thanks goes out to Principal Rosemary Southard for taking the lead on improvements. We've done some earlier improvements, but she's taken it an extra mile and done some mowing and even her and some other volunteers have come out and done some raking and dragging of the field. So we certainly thank them for their efforts and jumping in there. Eastern Charlotte Chamber of Commerce, the chamber will be running the business office upstairs in the Town Hall and they'll have that until the end of December. So dangerous unsightly premises, we still have three open files, two building permit rejection files are as well, open as well. And resident complaints, primary complaint that we have received over the last month has been ATVs on the main street. And so once again, we do advise people that despite the fact that there's a proposal with the town from Quad NB, nothing has been approved. So ATVs are not permitted on the town streets. So GNB Off-Road Enforcement was in the town this weekend, both Saturday and Sunday. I'm not sure if they made any stops, but complaints have also been passed on to the RCMP and so they're aware of the situation. And just a few other things that are coming up. A national holiday is September the 30th for National Truth and Reconciliation Day and the stat holiday on Thanksgiving, the 10th. So that's a general government report.
Any questions?
I have a question. Some parents have reached out to me regarding the maintenance of the field. And I was just wondering, who is, are we responsible for the maintenance?
We are. Yep.
Is there anything that we can do because of the places, is there anything that we can do between now and, say, November, December that we can help them?
We are looking at doing a re, like you're talking about the baseball field. So we are looking at actually going in and adjusting some of the gravel, the infield to bring back the pitching mound. So, you know, we weren't really aware that varsity team was even going to call this home until probably late August. So, you know, so we did have some plans to do some things, like we did install foul poles and distant numbers up in the outfield, readjusted some of the fencing. That still has to be done as well, some further fencing. But, you know, so we're trying to play a little bit of catch-up. That's why if people have plans with using, you know, town infrastructure, that we probably need to be brought into the conversation quicker, just to set expectations. And it'd be great if we could just drop everything we're doing and get to the field and drag it and mow it and everything else. But even late last week, we were contending with, you know, making sure the flags were up on Main Street and, you know, it was not something that we had planned.
Any other question? I have two points to raise with what Jason discussed. The first one is with regards to the developments for the industrial park expansion. We did receive confirmation that we can use our general funds to actually do cover our share in our engineering study, NEA, for the expansion. However, as we discussed previously, there is a new development that in the new entity, industrial parks are going to be covered by the entity. So although the development that we are contemplating in St. George relates to water and sewage, because that development is primarily contemplated for the industrial park, there is a great incentive to protect the residents of the town from any risks associated with the development, to actually set up a corporation which is going to take care of this development. And that is something that the CAO and I have been exploring by talking to St. John that already has set up a corporation for industrial parks. So if we can achieve that and set up a framework for an industrial park to handle the expansion, then we manage to actually take over the shoulders of our little town, the potential risk and cost for the industrial park expansion, and share it with a bigger community that's going to get the benefits from this expansion. So I would have liked to actually authorize Jason to spend up to $2,000 on legal fees to explore setting up that corporation. And I would like us to actually greenlight him the authority to actually look at that thing. So I just wanted, if you have any thoughts about that.
Would that be able to be done in the time we have left as council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Essentially, the issue is can we set up a vehicle? Because there are people who are eager to proceed with engineering study and the EA and not wait for another three or four months. Okay, so if we can set up a vehicle by which we can transfer our share for this portion, then that's going to become a package that after that is inherited by the larger entity.
So it can be completed before they take over.
The setup of a corporation, yes. Okay, so St. John has done it in the 60s and apparently that corporation is still alive. So we found a contact, but we have not fully explored it. So I just want to actually authorize Jason, as we are progressing, to not have to wait for another meeting to actually spend $1,000, $1,000 in corporation fees and legal fees and to serve this vehicle.
You want Jason to check with whom now to set this corporation up? Or could you explain that just a little bit?
Yes. I say that in order to be able to actually take the risk of that development from the limited number of houses that we have in St. George as part of our water and sewers budget, we need to actually try to tie it up to an industrial park venture. And to the extent that this development ties up to a specific expansion, we can set up a corporation of industrial parks that will take on this project, which is not part of the water and sewers of St. George, but is part of the industrial park. So it will be shared by the greater entity that comes up.
Yeah, I understand that. It's $2,000. What did you want?
$2,000 buys you a lawyer who's going to do the incorporation and set up this shell corporation that can actually take on the $30,000 investment to start the engineering study. So the investment in that entity will not be the St. George, will be part of that incorporation. We discussed, I think, several times, but it's important to actually inform the people that this is an option that we're exploring and we authorize our CAO to proceed. Because there are people who are actually saying, we cannot wait three months or four months. We have to start now. You have the money. You can spend the money if you want to. I mean, St. George, if he wants tomorrow, can actually go and authorize spending $40,000 to proceed. And I don't have any problem with that. I just want to make sure that this investment is going to done under the industrial park corporations. So both the benefits and the risks are going to be shared by a much larger community. So anybody has any concern about spending $2,000 for legal fees and other miscellaneous fees for setting up a corporation for that purpose?
The only concern I have is we spend that money. Are we going to be able to have this corporation set up before we are no longer or are we just...
That was a question from...
I know, but that's just, the timeframe is what I'm concerned about. I mean, we could go and get all the legal, you know, information that we need, but are we still going to be able to do anything about it?
I don't propose you to spend the money for information. I'm proposing that we spend the money for setting up the corporation.
Yeah, I understand.
And that takes about 10 days, like from the time on which you're submitting all your incorporation application until you get back an answer from the provincial government. It takes about 10 days.
10 days to set up a corporation?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. I was under the impression that it would take a lot longer than 10 days.
No. If we can do it, and this is why we checked that some, St. John has done it. So if we can do it, I'm proposing that we should actually make that minimal investment to actually try to protect our residents.
Councilor Armstrong, you're more up to date on things like corporations and businesses than I am. I'm a PR person. You're a businesswoman. Can you do that in 10 days?
We've done it in the last, yes. But, you know, a personal business corporation to protect you as the business owner, it takes it so that if something goes wrong, you know, you're not going to lose your home. You're protected.
Yeah, no, a limited company type of thing.
And essentially, I think that's what we're looking to do, is take the risk away from the town in regards to whether or not this will go forward or not. That's really what he wants to do. Is that what I'm hearing? So what you're asking, from my understanding, is so you're asking that the town spend $2,000 plus incidentals, which could be another 150 or whatever, to protect the town from this going sideways?
Yes.
That's essentially what you're saying.
An industrial parks corporation, which right now will be owned by St. George and come January 1st, by law, it will be owned by the entity.
But does that protect us because we're going to lose our corporation as a town? Will that still give us that same protection? Okay.
Yes.
Because we're not longer going to be in a corporate municipality.
And what we know from the Service Commission and from, I guess, the Transition Committee is that the industrial parks are going to become a responsibility of the entity. So they're associated from water and sewer.
Will this incorporation be specific to the growth needs that we're faced with right now?
For the industrial park?
Yes.
Yeah, so essentially, because the expansion that we contemplate from the approval that we have received from the government is for a specific industrial park expansion, for a specific industrial park client, we believe that we can actually set up.
So if I'm understanding correctly, essentially, we have a $2,000 risk to protect us as a community, as a town, or we take the $40,000 risk and it could go backwards on us? That's essentially what you're asking?
We will spend the $40,000 if that is approved. The only difference is that if we spend them at St. George, we set up a precedent that the water and sewer system of St. George is going to be the owner, operator, and risk taker of this venture.
Yes.
If we actually compartmentalize it as a side venture, as an industrial park venture, then that risk and benefit is shared by a much larger entity.
Okay.
Councilor Rubin?
No, I just... Legally, will it carry over?
I would say the precedent is there. The precedent is there. St. John has done it and operates industrial parks corporation for the last 60 years now? It was done in the late 60s, I heard. So we're not, yeah. So, yeah, so it is there. In fact, the gentleman who now is the caretaker of this corporation from St. John sent us some copies of their incorporation certificates. They are museum pieces, but they are still valid. They are still there.
St. John is still incorporated, though they're not losing their corporation.
Correct, correct.
We are.
Correct. So our assets, including that corporation, is going to become the ownership of the new entity. We'll still be responsible for water and sewer, but we'll not be responsible for the corporation.
No, I understand what you're saying. It's just that the residents of St. George, it's use or pay for water and sewage. And I don't feel that financially, the resident should be on the hook for anything like the $40,000 and/or an increased rate looking for water for something that is going to benefit everybody as a whole. Do I make sense? No, I understand. That's where the $2,000 comes from.
To protect the residents from that happening.
Does it, as Sam said, does it follow over once we lose our incorporation because St. John is still incorporated?
But that's what the lawyer will tell you.
That's part of, like basically, all our assets, all St. John's assets, including any incorporation that we may have, is going to be transferred to the entity. So including our logos. I don't know about the logos, but anyways.
Why do we have to pay $2,000 when we already have a lawyer on hand? Why do you want us to do another $2,000 to another lawyer?
$2,000 buys you the following. Buys you a name search, buys you a lawyer drafting the incorporation. How to count this thing? The letters of incorporation or something like that?
Letters of incorporation.
Yeah, letters of incorporation. It buys you the provincial fee, which is about, what, $300 or $400 bucks?
I don't think like that, but...
I think it's about $200 or $300 bucks. Anyways, it buys you that. And in general, we are paying a lawyer, a retainer, to actually provide us general advice. If we're going to get him involved in a specific project, we actually pay him extra. It's part of our...
But the lawyer will also tell you if it's actually possible in the event that we do lose our...
Correct, correct.
That's actually the question. Part of that question will be answered.
Very good point. So it's still of waving our hands around this table. We can get a professional who's going to get us an opinion, that's going to back with her expertise and do the job. I think it's a bargain. Who may not even spend a whole $2,000.
But our lawyer can do that too, can she not?
Yeah, we have a lawyer.
She would, but this would be additional, this would be a legal cost associated with this search, with this work, yes.
So you're saying our lawyer is saying that be an extra $2,000 to look into this?
This particular question.
Not all the money is going to go to the lawyer. I mean, the promise is going to get $300 or $400 bucks. The name search, I think it's going to be a name search at some point that we have to actually satisfy, a couple of corporate name search. St. George Industrial Parks Incorporated has to be, got a clearance that it's okay to use it. And so, you know, $2,000 is an upper estimate, but it's an insurance that we can buy. So are there any concerns about that? No? Okay, good. So can I have a motion to actually authorize Jason to actually have a budget of up $2,000 for doing this of your size?
I'll make that motion.
Anybody can say that?
I'll second it.
Any favor? Aye?
Well, better than $40,000, I guess.
I was going to say aye, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
$2,000, is it?
I mean, he has a responsibility and authority to spend them wisely. So yes, it's passed. The second thing I want to ask is, that's much simpler. How much we are spending for the cast iron pots?
Cast iron pots, they came out of the BIA fund, so they were earmarked for benches, some mainstream improvements. So I think overall, I think they were four grand maybe for the cast...
Four grands for pots, from the BIA fund?
BIA fund.
Which were like kind of our taxpayers for a special...
Yes, it was the former BIA when it dissolved, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. General Reports update on local government reform. Jason.
Thank you, your worship. Working on, for local government reform right now, we're working on a preliminary budget numbers across the two municipalities and six local service areas that will form Eastern Charlotte. A 2022 comprehensive review has been done of budgeting and we're now adjusting expenditures for the 2023 year. We're still developing a org chart for staff for Eastern Charlotte and compiling asset list with an assistance of a third party that has been hired by GNB. That's the status of local government reform.
Any question on the update on local government reform? No questions? Fire report, where the chief of...
Thank you, your worship. For the month of August, we had 11 incidents...
Thank you, your worship. For the month of August, we had eleven incidents. It'd be a typical month, I guess. One car accident, two false alarms, two ambulance assists, one mutual aid fire, one mutual aid rescue, two water rescues, one outside fire, and one vehicle fire. In training, firefighter Lee has been working on his firefighter one JPRs in conjunction with Muskwash Fire Department. So I think, thanks quote to Muskwash for assisting us with that. Bunker gear was ordered for 2022, though I'm not sure it'll be here in 2022. It may not get here until 2023. Firefighters participated in fireworks display in Blacksham, as well as the parade and the touch truck event. And as well, earlier in the month, they attended the first responder expo that was the lead up to the musical ride over at the Gonong Nature Park. Also, that's it. On a personal note, I have resigned as the association training coordinator for NBCC and the Fundy Firefighters Association after, I don't know, eight or 10 years in that position. I do intend to stay involved as an instructor and in the training world, though I'm finding I'm a little bit too busy to do the training coordinator part of it. So somebody else is, will be elected to do that and take over in January. And I'm taking another course through Doherty. So that's my report through, for this month. Questions?
Questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation report. Jason? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one. Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, your worship. So the commission drafted the new Town of Saint George zoning bylaw, 25C, for your consideration. This is a new bylaw that would implement your proposed new municipal plan that is being considered for third reading tonight. The new zoning bylaw introduces several new zones and provisions per the municipal plan. And I'll, I can talk more about that if you would like, when you go to that motion on your agenda. But in order for council to adopt this new zoning bylaw, they must give a first reading and set a date for a public hearing of objections and request of views of the planning committee. So they would have to go into motion based on your, how many more time you have left in your term. Alternatively, if there is a consideration for minor changes, we could look at that as well. But, yep, with regard to the municipal plan, the public hearing of objections was only attended by several people in council and myself, as well as the town staff with Jason. And that was, that occurred on August 31st. Regards to development. Development has not been terribly busy this year as opposed to last year. It's just been fifteen building permits so far and only one new permit in the report period versus in August. The total construction value for this year just totals close to $600,000. And as Jason mentioned, we are working with the CEO on one zoning and building enforcement file. So that concludes my report. Thanks.
I just want to, in passing, to actually get some information for the next item. This new zoning bylaw that you drafted?
Yep.
With regards to different zones, I was discussing with Jason this morning about the new zones that you have included and the particular uses that you have articulated, very, very specific. And I was just wondering if this thing has been, like what kind of review this thing has reviewed from experts as to...
If you would like, I can go into some of the rationale.
You can do it when we discuss...
Sure, I can do that now or then.
Yeah, let's do it later because I have some questions.
Certainly, yep.
Yes, sure. Okay. And just one question. You had only one permit over the last month.
Yeah, so it's been a fairly slow year. I think it's actually, everything's slowed down in comparison to last year throughout the region, so it's not unusual. Also, just last year, Saint George was fortunate to have several large-scale developments, the one in the industrial park, but then several other big files. So it just can happen where you go in these cycles and it just is a bit of a slower year. It's not unusual to be this slow, but this would be on the lower end of what you would normally see for permits.
Thank you. Any question from anybody? No? Okay, thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
And we'll go now to water and sewer support. Jason?
Thank you, your worship. The water and wastewater report for August 2022. Water consumption for the month of August has increased to 7.2 million gallons with an average daily usage of 241,606 imperial gallons. Some of the increase can be attributed to some extra use in the industrial park for filling a fire protection pond. Water levels in the wells have remained up and consistent throughout this summer. Some adjustment to the SCADA system parameters for well three had to be made to eliminate an alarm issue. The catch tank under the chlorine reservoir at well six had to be cleaned out due to a broken fitting, causing some chlorine to come out. The trim around the baseboard in well six was reattached to the walls as well. Sampson Equipment reps were down to go over some issues with the chlorine pumps at a couple of the other wells. The injector lances at the wells were removed and cleaned as part of a periodic maintenance program. Chlorine pumps settings were adjusted for better performance. Curb stop boxes and rods were replaced at the apartment building at 113 Main Street. The curb stop at 99 Main Street was repaired and lowered to avoid being hit during winter plow operations. Bi-weekly water samples were taken in lab and eight water samples were received on August the 9th for microbiological testing and identified in the submitted results below. And new thermostat was installed at the booster station. A repair done was well on the well casing, well number three, which was mentioned earlier in the GUI report. So that was part of that groundwater report that we did. Water flushing and samplings were done at well three. Once that was back together, we went back to well two, did some painting there on the door. The small gate valve boxes were given to the maintenance crews at the high school for valve repair jobs. Replacement parts will be returned to us. A new diaphragm was installed for the valve at one of the splash pads here. The feature had been shut off for majority of the summer, waiting for warranty parts. Sparers have now also been secured. They sent down some extra pieces for us. There was a major undertaking dug up and replaced the water service line to the residents at Hillcrest Drive. A service was also installed to a vacant lot beside number four while the trench was already open. Lagoon blower in buildings underwent much-needed cleanup and reorganization. Annual servicing has started to the blowers with the intake air filters to the building being cleaned. And new pressure, new air pressure gauge installed on the outlet line at well two, or lagoon two. New markers were installed at the post around the sediment pond for lagoon two as well. And recurring issue for sewage lift station eight on Campbell Hill was addressed and sorted out with the faulty control. Sewage lift station pump rep for Exilem in Dartmouth was in to check on their system, to go over some future needs. And we did sort of a bit of an inventory analysis of our sewage lift station pumps in town. A site visit from the government reps regarding the future innovations of lagoon wastewater handling was also made. Went over some of the ideas being addressed to help limit harmful gases emissions, sort of alternative ideas for waste management. There are a couple issues with the storm sewer lines on Brunswick Street being addressed. Both are on private properties, but affect our system as discharge into our main. And that is the end of the water wastewater report.
Thank you, Jason. Questions?
So that was an alarm issue and not an alarming issue?
Yes, just an alarm issue.
Because I wondered what the alarming issue was.
Yes.
The SLS pump representative from Dartmouth, is there going to be a report come on that? What the future needs and costs might be to keep our system running in good working order? Is that the purpose that this happened?
No, that was more or less, we provided them with the list of what we knew was our pumps. We have done asset management reports in the past, but this was more or less to provide what we knew to get back a more detailed report from him on, you know, how much horsepower the pumps are, you know, what we could actually as well start switching them out instead of just being confined to one type of a pump. So that's sort of the reason why we're doing it is to sort of examine other types of pumps instead of just staying with one pump maker. Is there something that we can, you know, add a bracket, add some sort of a spacer that we could then put other pumps in, so we're not having to deal with...
So this has nothing to do with the lifespan?
No, no, it wouldn't do. I mean, we pull that information out of our asset management so we know when they were put in. We did discuss, you know, some things, you know, annual maintenance projects. So we will probably be bringing in the manufacturer to come in and do an actual, I guess, bit of a training for some of our guys because we do have two to three new guys, so.
So then it takes me to the next one around the government reps coming in and talking about limiting harmful gas emissions. Again, is there a report on how we can work this through and just verbal?
No, this is just more or less a preliminary discussion on what we're doing. Sewage lagoon is a very, very preliminary way of treating waste. There's other ways of doing that. So we just more or less was an information session, sort of as well make some contacts with them and who in our industrial park is a contact for them as well. So most of their focus is certainly on industrial waste, not necessarily residential waste.
So the storm sewer lines that are on private property, is that a cost that the town has to absorb, or is it shared by the homeowner and the town?
Be shared by the landowner, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, Jason, you're talking about the BIO and B, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I just want to actually, a very semantic thing. It was not a government agency. In fact, it was an NGO, non-government organization, which is, it's essentially getting, tried to put together industry and government programs together for potential anaerobic treatment of organic waste, which will produce gas that you can burn and produce power. So if that was, if the industry was interested to actually go through that way, and there are many incentives for the industry to go that way, it could have actually take some waste out of our hands, basically. And that was where we're essentially, and the healthy thing is that they are, they, the parties know each other. I mean, the NGO has a good contact with the industry at a very high level, and they also have worked with NPO who may be the customer for the power that they produce. So it was a very useful meeting. A very useful meeting. And when we met some of the industrial park players, they knew about it and they were in discussions. It was a very useful thing, which was actually brokered by a resident of Saint George, Stanislav, the, you know, yeah. Any other question? Transportation?
Thank you, your worship. Transportation report for the month of August 2022. With the summer student program done for the season, duties and tasks have fallen back to the regular crew. Mowing, garbage collection, and water or flowers continue to be a priority. Infrastructure locates continue to be handled as a request comes in. Trackless municipal tractor has been busy flail mowing various locations where the mower can't access. Once again, the portable speed trailer sign was, has been used to monitor vehicle speeds around town. It was kept for three weeks, returned to Lawrence Station. High rock construction replaced some curving gutter, Main Street and Mount Pleasant, Lake River View as well. Some painting was done on the backhoe to eliminate bad rust spots, such as the step side. Vehicle inspections were completed. A complete service was done on truck three in preparation for the upcoming fall/winter season. A new gate close at dust sign was installed at Canal Beach. More asphalt patching was done at various locations. Garbage cans were replaced. A new picnic table was placed at the Eagles Nest and Splash Pad. Broken sign posts were replaced at the vacant lot at the corner of River View in Maine for pedestrian crossing. And a manorial tree was planted by the Dunwoodie family at Dunwoodie Corner. The high school reunion group borrowed some of the items, such as just the wooden barricades. Little gravel was donated to fill a spot to make the area safer. A small washout area at the driveway to the booster station was filled in. Some damaged vandalized walkway boards were replaced at the Day Adventure Center. Picnic tables had to be, keep shifting around at Canal Beach as people move them onto the beach and back. A new swing was installed at Canal Beach as well. A piece of plexiglass was installed here at the playground at Mackinac Center. With the tennis courts being overhauled to sell the pickleball nets, some of the old tennis nets and posts were removed and stored at the vacant building of the Day Adventure Center. A major clean organization was done to the grad at the town hall. Hangers were installed for grass trimmers, as well as stock water material sorted out. Bucket truck was rented by Look and Tell Auto to remove the grad banners. And an access road, Prince William Street, was mowed through. We temporarily used that road. It's not really a road. It's an official pathway, I guess, while we shut down Hillcrest Drive. Two signs were replaced after the Hillcrest Drive was done. Both had to be replaced for access for machinery had to be removed. Sunka spots in the vacant lot at the end of Brunswick Street were filled in. Topsoil was used to fill in a couple holes along the Day Adventure Center walkway. Table at the Upper Falls Park was removed for wheelchair access. Goes along with the wheelchair picnic table that we have at the Lower Basin as well. And a building at the Day Adventure Center is being used for storage. It was a vacant one, and they did some sort of prevent, to prevent unwanted access, did some work down there. To the mental health awareness banners were taken down and we replaced those. There were some on stock that were replaced. So barricades that were loaned out for work at the Upper Falls Dam to block off the yard for vehicles. Truck three is beginning to show some signs of electrical issues that require attention in the near future. Primary diagnostics at our shop has not located the issue, so more depth searches will be needed with better equipment so they can be done. It's a transportation report.
Thank you, Jason. Questions?
What year is truck three? How old is it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years old?
No, fifteen, 2015.
Oh, 2015. When's it due for replacement?
We typically try to get 10 years out of those, 2015.
So we got a ways to go then.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we move to item number eight. Bills paid and payable in principle to August 31st, 2022, in the amount of $742,211.75. Questions? Questions?
How many foul poles was that?
How many, what did you say?
Two.
Two what?
Two foul poles.
Oh. I have no questions. They are all happy?
I have no questions.
I'm going to make assumptions.
Okay, so no questions, okay? Let's say a new one. Can I have a motion for approving?
I'll second it.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
So it has been approved. New business, back to Alex. The new municipal plan bylaw 24C. So I guess we have a second and third and final reading for this bylaw. I'm just wondering how you want to handle it. Are there anything that you want to add, Alex, from?
With regard to the municipal plan, I don't have any more comments. I think we've gone through it now with, I believe it's been three meetings, with the first reading, the public presentation, and now the public hearing. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them at this point.
Any questions?
No.
I think we have done quite a lot of work on that one, too. Agreed. So how we handle the second and third reading?
I'll just need a motion. So it'll be second reading of the municipal plan. This will be by?
By title only?
By me?
By title only.
One of those will be by full. I mean, we have had this posted. It will be available, it's been available for review, so we can just say as submitted. But yes, we need a motion for second and then a motion for third and final.
Okay, so can I have a motion for a second, please?
I make a motion for the second reading of municipal bylaw Plan 24C.
I'll second it.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
And third and final reading enactment of the municipal plan bylaw 24C. That's a lot of reading?
That'd be third and final reading, yes.
So we're going to read the whole thing?
No, we don't need to read the whole thing. It has been made available, it's been on draft since then, so. So yes, as submitted, in its current form.
So can I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the third and final reading for the proposal for the Town of St. George Municipal Plan bylaw 24C.
And I'll second it.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Let's go ahead and receive royal assent soon.
Correct.
Moving on, the new zoning bylaw 25C. And that, I suppose if everybody has a copy, is what Jason sent us.
Worship, so this would, that's correct. So Alex can certainly offer an introduction for this bylaw, provide some background.
So, yes, this bylaw that you have, which you would have received and the public wouldn't have seen yet because you have to consider if you're going to refer this public for a hearing. But this is a bylaw that would implement your municipal plan bylaw that you've just passed. The bylaw contains the zones that were laid out in the municipal plan regarding the proposed zones. So there's five what's called urban zones and then the three what's called rural zones. So this zoning bylaw is unique in some regards. You'll see, it's quite different than what you had. First things first, it's a significantly streamlined bylaw. We had a fairly unwieldy and large bylaw for St. George to work with, coming in at 105 pages. This bylaw brings it down to 42. So it simplifies the rules and explains your zone in one or two pages. So you can print it out and you can visually see what it would look like to develop on your property. Has picture of a, you know, a typical house or a typical building in your zone. So another example would be in the current zoning bylaw, you have 25 pages of definitions. This reduces that significantly. In the current zoning bylaw, you have 24 pages of general rules that apply to various things, parking, landscaping, other general provisions, related details around row houses, et cetera, et cetera. It reduces it from 24 pages down to 12. It's also compatible with the Building Code Administration Act. So one of the things that is coming into play for the new entity is a new requirement when it comes to building bylaws. Your current Town of St. George building bylaw will be repealed at the end of the year and you'll fall under the general regulation until the new Eastern Charlotte Community Council adopts its own building bylaw in compliance with that new act. But this anticipates that. One of the things is it requires development permits for small structures, accessory structures like garages. The new Building Code Administration Act is no longer going to be applying code to small structures like garages, even in municipalities. So some of the rules that would typical in rural areas are actually coming into municipalities. So what this does, it makes sure that you still need development permits, zoning permits for garages and such like that. So it makes sure that, you know, people are following setbacks and not building right on top of the neighbor's property line. So we talked about how this is a visually attractive document. We've used a similar format in the Town of St. Stephen. So when it came to like the idea of using this concept, we've trialed some of it in St. Stephen already. And it works really well with the general public in terms of easy to understand. This is a very different bylaw in terms of the zones for St. George, though, and is unique to St. George. It does a lot to encourage housing, specifically rental housing, in terms of more than one unit on a lot. It does also encourage commercial and institutional development appropriate scales in various types of zones. You'll notice there's no specific residential zones. And that comes right out of the municipal plan as we propose it to you. But it has different intensities. So certain areas that were traditionally residentially zoned might have the U1 designation. So that's your zone with lesser population density and smaller scale other types of uses. So stuff that's not going to change the character of the area away from residential. When it comes to climate, there's lots of provisions and they're related to climate change that weren't in the old zoning bylaw. The old zoning bylaw had a different approach to dealing with floodplains. It kind of just said, here's a waiver, you can build at your own risk. This doesn't do that. And there's a reason for that because just signing a waiver isn't, it's not taking it far enough, in my opinion, by professional opinion. You need to set down really good rules when it comes to developing areas that are subject to flood risk. And we're proposing that you put in some standards related to people developing in known floodplains, but also when it comes to the McAdavick Basin where that will be subject to some sea level rise. We also talked about how this is a very unique zoning bylaw in terms of, well, visual appearance and how people can read it, also in terms of what it can encourage in terms of development. Very flexible for a lot of people how they could use their property without throwing away all rules or regulations. This is, what we're trying to do is hit the balance that the municipal plan aimed for. But also does a number of things other than just encouraging the right kinds of development. It also protects agriculture in a way that the current zoning bylaw doesn't. For example, reducing the sizes of lots that you can develop in agricultural zones. Now, not every part outside of the service boundary of St. George is zoned agricultural. There's a number of areas that are left rural settlement. So these are areas we could do, the one acre lots, potentially smaller if you have access to a sewer water line where you can do camps and so on. But in the areas that have really good agricultural viability, we put those in this sort of protective agricultural zone. So that reduces potential for small lot subdivisions getting in the way of people running farms. So I think that's something that's come up recently is a pretty big and important issue for the community. So I think that summarizes the gist of it, but I'm sure there's lots of questions because it's still a 42-page document and there's a lot to digest there, so.
I'm going to start from the right. Any questions? From the left? Any questions?
I think you asked a question earlier and that Alex is supposed to follow up about
Yes.
The specificity of livestock's particular. Like, we define like one animal unit and we look at animal units, like for example, it's one horse. How do, like, where did that come from? How did you figure out that one horse was suitable for 400 meters square?
Yeah. So that's not a list that I came up with. This is something which we're using that would be standard, either standard zoning sort of provisions, but we're also looking at what the Department of Agriculture, Aquaculture and Fisheries uses for general, what do you call, animal units? It's essentially just management of animal manure. So making sure that you don't have 1,000 pigs on a one acre property where you're going to overwhelm the land's ability to absorb that kind of nutrient. So it's about reducing the amount of, basically, nutrient input into the land.
Well, I want to follow up on that one. We had a discussion with Jason today and I'm not sure that the units and correspondence to limits that have been set up here have any bearing to reality with any real agricultural operation. For example, if there are specialized units who actually grow little pigs and they farm them out to other companies who actually grow them bigger. In a place like that, one has a building, he may have like 3,000 pigs, little piglets, okay? And he grows them up to a size and then he sells them. Chickens, if you have chickens and you have like a unit produce eggs, you're going to have thousands of chickens in basically a two acre lot and you have ways of managing the manure. So these things are not captured there and I'm not sure if any person from the Department of Agriculture has seen this correspondence. So one thing that I would have liked to see, if, to get someone from the Department of Agriculture to actually take a look in the limits that you are proposing here to confirm that they are realistic. Because, you know, my second question, my second question is, so that's one action that we would have liked to actually put on with you and we can actually return to it on the next council meeting, see if you have been able to actually get this information. The other thing which I kind of struck me is how much more government this document introduced to our lives. You know, I just went through the sign permits and fees and there are several pages about what kind of signs exist and how the letter size and maybe the font should be, what kind of permits you have if you decide to actually change the color of your sign. There is a lot of government there, a lot of government. And, you know, we, just to actually give you some insight, the new entity moved on to actually moving from a town to a rural community. So there is a lot of things that goes the other way than what people actually want. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, I know that this cuts down the pages from 140 pages to what? I mean,
Forty-two.
Forty, yeah, it's more font, though. It's a much more font, but anyways. So I, are there any compelling reasons that we have to deal with this document now? In our lifetime?
Why would we not do it?
Sorry?
Why would we not do it?
I'll tell you what, because before we actually, before I actually voted on this one, I really, what he mentioned about this thing has been cleared by the Department of Agriculture. I want to hear that thing confirmed.
Second part of that is pulled a public hearing. That's the second part of the whole thing.
Correct, but in order to actually have a public hearing, we need to actually ensure that what?
Well, we could, we can keep stalling it, whatever.
You think it's a major job, Alex, to actually give us this confirmation or a review from the Department of Agriculture?
So there's a couple ways you can handle this and I, as I mentioned when I gave my just general report, I don't want to put you under the pressure of you have to adopt, you have to go with this right now because you're just seeing this now and it is a big deal to adopt a new zoning bylaw. So what you could do, and this would, you'd have to look at your schedule. If you want to keep this on a pretty tight schedule because you don't have all the time in the world here, you're going to want to look at getting probably, if you want to delay doing a second, sorry, a first reading and referring it to PRAK and having a document that you're ready to send to the public, you're going to want to meet in one week's time. And I'll get an answer for you and if there's any amendments needed, I can get that to you in one week's time.
I'll tell you what, is it possible if you can actually get someone from the Department of Agriculture to come down here and who can actually go through this because there are a lot of, I mean, I am keenly interested, some other people, other councillors are keenly interested. I like to actually understand how this thing came about and together, we're, today we're looking with Jason about, you know, what other municipalities that have this kind of agricultural use have in their things. And we're not able to actually find anything meaningful to actually, so I believe that the person at the Department of Agriculture may have that information and I like to actually understand the basis of what's happening here.
Certainly, and as I said, like, we've used these types of terminology, animal units, and this sort of basis in other rural plans that Department of Agriculture has seen. In this case, it's because it's basically, we've used this types of provisions before. I didn't refer it to them specifically for this zoning rig, but we can. And what I could do is I could get ahold of them. I can't promise on their behalf that they'd attend your council meeting, but I would do my very best to get them to comment on this specific draft. But again, they've seen this type of proposal from us before with other regulations which we've had to send by them, but in this case, where it was stuff that they've seen before in different cases. I didn't see there was a need to go back to them for the exact same comment.
Can I ask you which unit in the Department of Agriculture deals with this kinds of?
Lynn Moore. So if you, she's commented on the Fundy Bay Rural Plan Draft that's being considered at the end of this month. And so you'll see very similar terminology being used there, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's do that. I mean, I would have liked to actually get a confirmation from you before I actually put it to the council, to actually know that we have the right document here.
So, yeah, and you can do, you can do that a couple ways. So if you're going to do your first reading, well, there's a number of things you could do. So if you're going to look to do some amendments to this document, you can either delay your first reading and you're setting a date for a public hearing and referring it to committee, or you can just go ahead with it as is and get the ball rolling. But if you do want to make amendments, you might have to readjust your date for your public hearing and so on. So it might be best to hold off if you're considering some amendments to this document.
I have identified, together with Jason, we identify certain things which do not define an agricultural use if you follow them to the letter.
Okay.
And that's why I want to actually confirm that this is correct or not.
So I'll do my best to get ahold of this person if that's the will of council and let's make sure we're in line. And if there's any other things council would like to communicate tonight, I can make sure we get something in place. Again, we have a pretty short timeframe here, so I would suggest getting together in at least a week from today to do your first reading with the new amendments and so on.
The other thing which I mentioned earlier is like about signage, for example. If I look at the permit that requires even to paint a sign, it's daunting. I mean, for a small community of 1,000 people or a rural community to actually have to actually apply for a sign, to paint your sign. I mean, are we trying to introduce solutions for problems that do not exist? And I'm just trying to understand why these things are even there.
Yeah, so, I mean, there is currently in your zoning bylaw, there is requirements for signs. for signs. What this does is it actually introduces several categories of signs you don't need permits for, but it's very, very specific about signage. So, if there's a category or there's something council's seen that you say that's, we really don't need a section on portable signs, what you would do, you either can do one of two things, say, here are rules for portable signs, but you don't need a permit. We're trusting the public to follow the rules that we lay down, but we're not gonna chase people for a permit for it. That's one way to do it. The other approach would be just to delete the section altogether. The problem being, if you do that, if it's not permitted expressly, it's prohibited. So, you could be in a situation where a business is putting up portable signs, for example, and it's not listed in your bylaws as some form of advertising that they're permitted to do in the community. It could be an issue down the road when a future administration looks at that and says, well, you don't have the permit or permission to do that type of advertising. It's not allowed. You have to stick to the stuff that's mentioned in the bylaw. So, if you think it's a little bit onerous to obtain signed permits for all these things, I think the solution might be just to say that all these types of signed permits that you don't think are necessary, in the view of council, I should say, then just make those things that don't require permits, but that's the way you want them. If you need to use as provisions, they're there for you to deal with a problem that may arise, so.
Okay.
Is there an avenue in this zoning bylaw for education in terms of, I noticed that in this particular bylaw, based on our old one, is the terminology, you go from, you know, residential to U and there's some changes that confuses me as the reader, but it's gonna confuse the, the, the community as well, when you've been in a residential one for, I don't know, however many long, and all of a sudden now you're a U one. So, there is, I think there's a little educational element that has to, how is that gonna be looked at?
Yeah, and that's, that's a great question. I think we could, we could make some comparisons to the different new zones to what, what were, what were in place. So, I think if you had U one, that would be similar to an R two zone. And U two might be similar to more of an R three type of zone potentially, but there's, but they're actually quite different. The reason they're not called residential or commercial specifically, in the way that a lot of zoning has become a bit of an impediment for community development, let's say you're in an area that's a residential zone and somebody wants to do something that has a sort of a business nature, or they're gonna do a multi-unit development. The problem with doing the, the categories of residential, commercial, institutional strictly, it does, it almost creates a perception that nothing else could ever happen here. So, if somebody starts a little business, then it's like, you can't be here, it's a residential zone and it becomes a bit of an issue. So, when you, when you kind of say, well, we're just all in this sort of built-up area of the municipality and this is at various degrees of intensity and we're in the lowest intensity area, it takes away some of that perception that other things don't belong here. So, it's just trying to say that it opens that up a little bit. So, that's kind of the idea behind that.
Well, the problem that I have with that is I think landed on my desk today and same with other councillors. I mean, and we had a lot of questions ourselves before we say, oh, let's vote the first reading. How, when you have it?
We've got this. I've read it twice.
Okay.
It took me twice to try to understand it.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying.
No, but I read it.
Yeah.
And then we just got this.
Yes.
It's just the various, well, three designations that you told, wasn't there in there?
Yeah, so what you would see in your package Thursday was the same document, but when we were going through some things with the map, Jason picked up a property and we picked up three properties that needed to go from U one or U two to U three. So, I think it was...
So, that's what I'm saying, there are a lot of, it's a new thing and there are still, I mean, there are things that we are still finding. So, and there is nothing urgent about this thing.
No, but I mean, we have had it before tonight.
And I do have a problem philosophically about the fact that we are moving in a direction of a lot more government in very little things, trying to solve, having solutions for problems that do not exist. And anytime you do that, there are problems with the community, with the businesses, with the residents. I just, I just need some, like, if you can actually get us some information with regards to, first of all, confirm that what you have there passes mustard with respect to units, for example, for farming and animals. And us perhaps have a discussion about, do we really need to actually have all these sign bylaws? Do we need to have all these permits? Like, if you want to actually change the color of your sign outside, I mean, that has to go to state and apply for a permit and wait for the permit and then have an inspector come to inspect whether or not she painted it the right way or not. It's a lot more government. So, I think it's worth while to actually have this discussion before we say, let's vote for that. That's my thinking.
I'm comfortable with one more week. I'm comfortable with waiting one week.
You want, you want?
I am comfortable with waiting one more week.
Yes, yes, yes. So, yeah, okay, so.
So, if, if it's, if I could propose this to your worship, is it possible that council could meet again, I don't know what the, your schedule is too, Jason, but is possible council could meet again to do like a bit of a workshop? Like, you get your, if you get your comments to us, then we could, we could make sure that they're all on the record and then we can go section by section to see if there's anything that would be amended?
It's a two ways, I mean, it's a two directions. I mean, you have to do some homework and you have to do some homework, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I agree with what he proposed. Like, we do need to have a pow-pow within the council about this thing before we say, let's greenlight it and move on.
Yeah.
So, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't be scheduling a special meeting in a week's time. We do have to have some, some days for it to be scheduled as a special meeting. So, I guess at this point, we would just, you know, this would be, if council wishes to table this, we can table just the meeting of the zoning bylaw at this point and bring it back out either in a special meeting or the next regular meeting at the latest.
Okay.
But in between that time, we would, we would try to convene council in a, in a meeting and workshop to review this.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to table it? For a week?
I'll make the motion to table it for a week, yes.
And can I have a second?
Also conduct.
And only favor for, for this motion?
Hello?
Okay. Thank you. Gas tank, if, no, sorry, sorry. Yeah, number six, nine C, gas tax fund, allocation of funds and adjustment to GTF. What's the GTF?
The gas tax fund.
Oh, gas tax, okay.
Thank you, worship. So, just bringing in this to council, just for revision of the five-year capital investment plan. So, making the adjustments as follows. So, we've done some adjustments to the plan, I think, back in April, when we allocated funds to do paving in St. George. So, this would be another adjustment to the, the gas tax agreement. So, additional twenty thousand four hundred sixty-three to be allocated from gas tax fund to the utility for the purpose of water utility infrastructure projects for 2022. And that would be for the lower bridge pipe installation. So, as I mentioned earlier, that we did allocate some funds for both well number two upgrades and the lower bridge pipe installation. So, we did the well, the well number two upgrades, those came in a little over budget. So, we can go back to gas tax. There are funds available in the gas tax account. In addition, ten thousand dollars be allocated from gas tax to the street road resurfacing projects for 2022 as well. So, really, right now, I think we have just a little over thirty thousand, thirty, I think it may be around thirty-five thousand or so that's left in the gas tax fund. So, that would use up the remainder of that portion for these, for these projects. Next year, we do have the final year of the gas tax plan. I believe next year is a hundred and, it might be one hundred and nineteen thousand that will be coming in under gas tax. So, right now, as, as the plan stands, it'd still be used for the Manor Road. That was one of the original plan for the gas tax. So, of course, that will be into the new entity and the plan will just go ahead and proceed as is.
Any question? If I may, I want to ask, just before I, before we move on to the next one, I want to ask Alex a question on the, it just came to me, I had it written down, but I forgot to ask it. With that new zoning bylaw, a building like the one that we are building now on Canal Beach, if it was inside the town, would have been able to be built?
Yes. Do you want me to go there?
Yeah, I'll check, I want to actually...
So, your question is, in Canal, where you're building that new building, could that be done under this zoning bylaw? Well, it, it really depends, would be the answer, because it depends what zone it would be located in. But what we, if we were using the same sort of rationale that was used in this document in the St. George LSD, what would be, would probably be in the conservation zoning category, which is mostly parks and open space uses, which, this would be accessory to that and be permitted.
I'm talking about flooding.
And the other thing we'd be looking at doing with, with that would be to make sure that all your electrical and other kind of key plumbing components are considering the floodline. So, that would be one of the things that would be required.
Okay.
Yeah.
This, this one, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Still gotta make a motion for this.
Which one?
The one that we were just talking about, the gas tax fund.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Sorry, yeah. So, if we don't have any question about the gas fund, tax fund, we need a motion for the allocation of funds as per what Jason had proposed.
Okay, I make a motion that we do the allocation to put the funds into the gas tax fund. The exact wording, move of the document entitled Town of St. George Revised Five-Year Capital Investment Plan for the GTF Administrative Agreement 2019 to 2023 be adopted.
Second.
Only favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item nine D, St. George Monument Time Capsule. Just, Jason, do you want to introduce the subject?
Sure, worship. Yes. So, this is just a proposal for a monument sculptor, sculpture to be placed here in St. George to commemorate the, I guess, the departure of the Town of St. George as part of reform. And a, a project overview has been distributed to council for this, for this proposal.
I have a question. Did we spend money on this one already?
We have. We have spent some money. We brought the sculptor in to look at stones and possibilities. So, I think there's a hundred and forty dollars there. And to do a preliminary casting type of design, there was about two hundred dollars spent there.
And the casting design has been rejected?
Yeah, well, it's still...
Because of cost considerations.
Yes, there's certainly, yeah, there's quite an extensive cost for doing a bronze plaque.
And the money for this one here comes from where?
So, it was believed that this would be being allocated from tourism funds, so tourism funds to be received that are currently part of the tourism levy that we receive each year.
Which have been accumulating money on this fund for how long?
That's been enacted since 2021.
Twenty twenty-one. So, we started collecting money in 2021.
Correct.
And have we spent any of that money?
Money each year is spent for tourism items. I mean, it's what we would consider as anything that we find is a tourist draw to St. George. So, I mean, a thing like a splash pad operation could be considered that. You could even consider, you know, anything to do with recreation like Canal Beach operations and upgrades can be considered that as well. So, we have used some of the funds. So, as of right now, there's only two, two, two accommodations that are paying into that levy. So, you know, that will be looked at, I'm sure, in the near future. But right now, it's the motel and the hotel that are paying into the levy.
So, do you use some of that money to be, stuff that needs to be done at the Eagles' Nest?
Yeah, anything really that's considered a tourism area. And certainly, the Eagles' Nest, we've received a lot of money in the past, you know, the last few years for tourism, Department of Tourism for upgrades there, yes.
Yeah, I'm also thinking that maybe some benches and some garbage cans along the new coastal trail would be something we could use.
Yeah, coastal trail's not complete yet, so we're still looking at benches. But certainly, I mean, that, you know, I don't think there's a whole lot of funds in for benches. In fact, I know there's not. I mean, we, we do spend, you know, four or five grand on actual municipal benches when I think they only have two thousand dollars left for some of those add-ons. So, so yes, it could be used for those things as well.
I had some questions on the budget that you have proposed. They are small items, but they're about a few thousand bucks. The stones were supposed to be donated. Has anything changed?
Uh, yes, the stones have changed. I contacted the owner of those stones and...
He wants two hundred bucks?
He wants a hundred bucks each, yes.
Okay, so, okay, I thought they were, they were, they were gratis. And the second thing is with regards to the safety supervision, you put there about fifteen hundred dollars?
That's correct.
Why is that?
Assistance. So, there was, I just, we just looked at the cost of a minimum wage of having something, the worst-case scenario, that if we had to have somebody hired to assist the sculptor. So, there was a safety concern that he raised of working alone. So, worst-case scenario is that he would have somebody there. Now, we did look at bringing this, the sculptor work to the town hall.
Yes.
So, that you have to work during business hours at the town hall. Now, it's not always somebody there in the town yard. So, I mean, that would be something we'd have to discuss with him to make sure. But at the very, this is again, a budget that's, that's looking at the, the far reaches of how much this could cost just for the sculption, the sculptor.
And where, where was that, that sculpture was supposed to be put?
Uh, once completed?
Yes.
So, it will be, I believe it's gonna be put in the front of McAdamic Place here.
So, it's gonna be like a St. George monument in front of the McAdamic Place?
Correct.
Okay, for the Town of St. George, which I guess is gonna seal its chapter and I think, okay.
So, you, this email that I have here now, you're telling me that if we went ahead with this, that the monument slash sculpture is gonna cost the Town of St. George eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars?
That's what we're budgeting.
That's what you're saying, is like, with this sculpture, I went online and looked him up and like sixty-six hundred, three thousand, twelve fifty, eighteen hundred, five thousand, eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars? Is that correct?
Eighteen, yeah, eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, correct.
I just wanted to make sure that I'm reading it the way...
Correct. So, that wouldn't include anything such as a time capsule? That would be addition, any type of, I guess, landscaping?
And this is all for a time capsule? I thought we were just talking time capsule. We seem to have got carried away with all this. I personally would think that the Town of St. George residents would probably shoot me as a councillor if I said, yeah, go ahead and spend eighteen thousand dollars for a time capsule. I'm sorry, that's just my opinion. I thought we were talking about a time capsule, that we were going to get a small piece of granite, drill a hole in it and put a capsule, either stainless steel, aluminum, whatever, won't rust. And inside of that, we could put things that would be particular to the Town of St. George and seal it over and maybe put a little plaque, thousand dollars, and we're done. I mean...
With a plaque?
Yeah, no, yeah, with a plaque. I mean, like, you put a little plaque on the front and says, "Time capsule, nineteen oh four to twenty twenty-two," or Town of St. George Incorporated, something very similar. And just, as you say, set it up front here. But to hire a sculptor for sixty-six hundred dollars and to pay X number of dollars for him to stay at a hotel and then to do, three thousand dollars for his expenses, three thousand dollars for tools, I want to know what kind of tools he's getting for three thousand, because I'll go up and take my little hammer and put a hole in a piece of granite. But maybe I'm being facetious or being silly here, but no, no way. I don't want to have anything to do with eighteen thousand dollars for a time capsule. I'm sorry, that's my opinion. I do, yeah, okay, time capsule, like I said.
So, I guess, I guess I want to actually hear first of all, if there is any support for anything close to that budget?
Not close to this budget.
You're asking the other councillors there?
No, I'm not in favor of it. Not for that price, no.
Can I ask you? Can I ask you, do you pay $5,000 for, for, for the washrooms for a tourist center last, last year? That was from that same fund?
The washrooms for the tourist center?
Yes, for the touring center.
That would have come out of for, for the VIC at Granite Town Farms?
So, it comes from the touring levy?
We would have contributed money, yes, to their use. Last year, they were still in sort of a gray area, whether or not they were still the visitor information center, so, council at that time, I think this was the previous council voted to approve that.
I'm just, I'm just, if we don't spend the money which has been allocated from this fund, I think we have a responsibility to the taxpayers of St. George to actually return that money. Because in the new, starting January, everybody in this, in this, in this entity is going to be paying about three times what we are paying now to the Service Commission for Tourism Development. So, there is a, there is a need to actually look at the bylaw and say if we're going to continue having it or not before, and then decide about the money. But, yeah, you may be right, there may be things that we can do on the Eagles Nest or whatever, but there is a need to actually...
Yeah, so we could, there, I think there are other things we could spend the money on tourism-related rather than spend $18,000.
Before January?
Yeah.
Before January?
Yeah.
Before January, yes. Oh, yeah, so, okay.
There's lots of areas, like you mentioned, a washroom, there's picnic tables, handicap picnic tables. To me, a handicap picnic table is something that someone's in a wheelchair can wheel up to, you don't have to wheel in around this, whatever they did down at Eagles Nest, and put two braces here, rip the top of the table off, you do an actual handicap picnic table.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's just my opinion.
You know, this, this was funds, again, that were collected from the two organizations in our town, the motel and the hotel, so...
Exactly, it's not taxpayers' money.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be taxpayers' money, it was, it was under that tax levy, and that was, that money would be earmarked for, for tourism, tourism development, so...
I'm sure the hotel, which is right across the street here, would really like to see...
To get the money back?
No.
Would love to get the $2,000 back.
No, just, just let me finish. They would really like to see the splash pad, which you can look out the hotel window if there's people there with small children in the summertime, to be able to come over and sit down comfortably and not sit in no shade, 80 degrees or 90 degrees, and the sun beating down on those little tiny children out there running around, that they could go in under shelter and change a baby's diaper, do whatever had to be done. To me, that would be a tourist attraction. But then again, maybe I'm thinking, I'm from the old school, maybe I don't know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay, so I guess we can actually, for the time capsule, do you see anything that being done with the time capsule?
I say, okay, get a piece of granite, set it out there, drill a hole in it, get your cylinder, put the names of all the mayors from 1904 to 2022, put it in there, put a picture of the seal, the logo, and any, any other thing, and put it down in there, put your top over it, put a little thing on. Cement Monuments in St. Stephen go up the graveyard all the time, and they work on granite. I'm sure they would come down and do something out here for us, just not going to cost us $18,000, not even going to cost us $6,000. Yeah, okay, I, time capsule's a great idea, but tone her down a bit here. And why don't we call Cement Monuments in St. Stephen and say, "What would it cost you to engrave on a piece of granite?" I mean, granite's granite, I mean, all the tombstones in the graveyard are made of granite, aren't they? I don't know, I'm not up there yet, not going yet for a while.
Jason, we're in a similar, in a similar meeting in Penfield, in Penfield for three of these things. How much was the thing per, per, they want to have three?
The Penfield Air Base Memorial? I think they're, they're budgeting in around $250,000.
$250,000. So, it's about $80,000 per, per of this, of this.
Correct, yeah.
So, it's about $80,000 for a granite monument.
My good Lord, man, there's granite all around this place, we just have to get a contractor to go and get a stone.
Yeah, the people went through the process. But anyway, just, just to actually understand that, if we want to actually, if we want to get a plastic thing and put our names there and then bury it, we can probably do it for $1,000 bucks.
Well, it wouldn't have to be plastic, I mean, you could get an aluminum cylinder, somebody somewhere must have some kind of cylinder, but...
Anyways, okay, so, basically, okay, from what I understand here, there is no traction for, for a granite monument?
Not a monument at $18,000, no.
Okay, so, so, we move it on, and if there is anything about time capsule in the next weeks or so, we can actually bring it up? Or otherwise, we can die quiet till death and...
Try to find something that's a little bit more palatable for, financially responsible, how's that?
Yeah, but I still believe the diapers thing for the hotel would not be an appropriate thing to...
What'd you say, sir?
The diaper changing thing over, over by the shade, by the hotel.
Well, I use that as a small example, but I mean, a shade for small children, people like myself, I can't sit out in the shade, I don't want this beautiful skin to get wrinkled.
Okay, we move on to, so we don't have anything, anything to actually do on that one. We spent some money, $500 or so, but it was all for good use. All business, letter for Mr. Alan Holmes, use of the Town St. George logo. Jason?
Yes, Your Worship. So, this is something that we've had under all business for a couple of meetings now, so this is just a request by Mr. Holmes to use the town logo, which, as we see, is the town logo that's on our, our bylaws, so we'll be using that logo for him to create T-shirts that he could put on other material, and perhaps, and I guess, he'd want to be responsible with reproducing that logo. He's also recommended that we perhaps go buy coffee mugs and chains and stickers and things like that. We typically don't buy material like that to sell, we're not in the business of selling T-shirts or anything like that, so. Typically, as well, I think we've talked about this before, the town logo is, is used by the town. It's on the side of our trucks, it's on our letterhead, it's on our bylaws, freely letting anyone use that town logo either now or once we're part of Entity 53. Even more importantly, under Entity 53, we do not want to have a point where we have people using the town logo for the Town of St. George, and having residents confused that the Town of St. George still exists and Eastern Charlotte is some other type of government. So, that's why I certainly don't recommend anyone using the town logo. We have it pretty well maintained, people do email us for different promotions, you know, Chris keeps a pretty good record of who's using the town logo and where the permissions have been given. And, we actually even have a bit of a protocol with colors and times that we use those, so. So, I know that, you know, Mr. Holmes has been, has been waiting for us to make a decision, but certainly, he can, you know, say, "St. George," he can take a picture of the falls, and put those on T-shirts and stuff, but the actual logo or the seal that we have with St. George and the dragon, those are certainly identifiers of our municipality.
We're supposed to hear from, from the regulations and have a definite answer on that one. Have there been any regulations issued about whether or not what you are describing is going to be the situation after January 1st?
We've raised it with the province with many things, it goes onto a radar to be looked at.
Yes.
We know that, you know, documents, agreements, assets, buildings, vehicles are all moving from St. George to Eastern Charlotte, so we don't see any, anything otherwise that would say that the icons, the logos of either Village of Black's Arbor or the Town of St. George would move as well. Those still would be, again, on active bylaws, you know, bylaws such as the municipal plan that we passed today will still be active in January, so those will still will be symbols of, of the local government. Eastern Charlotte will have, will still be, will be active with both the bylaws of the Village of Black's Arbor and, and the Town of St. George.
I personally say no. It's a logo, there's lots of other things that signify St. George. The falls, I mean, that's appeared in National Geographic, the picture of the falls, which everybody knows it's the Town of St. George, this, this one right here. And like you said, the dragon, St. George the dragon, but for the town logo, my personal opinion is no.
You're talking about as a logo, not the Town of St. George, but essentially the houses and the river, right?
No, I say no to this, right here.
Yeah.
And, I mean, if you want to put something on T-shirts or cups or whatever, you could do that, because that's not...
So, for example, Town of St. George, a community strong, do you have a, do you have a trademark, a trademark on the community strong, Jason?
On the community strong?
Yeah.
We don't have a trademark on the statement.
Okay, so essentially, if, 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 if Mr. Holmes wants to actually print T-shirts, Town of St. George, a community strong, and put some sort of a depiction of St. George, is there any, anything that can keep him from doing it?
No, as long as there would be, you know, it wouldn't get into a situation that he's, you know, someone's trying to exhibit that they are a form of local government or...
Yeah, that, that I understand, but you know, if, if somebody flies the Confederation flag on his truck, nobody's going to say that he's the sheriff of Alabama, right? I mean, let's be realistic here, I mean, that's...
That's right. I mean, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, there'd be no issues if he uses something like a statement like, you know, Kennedy Strong, fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
The actual logo, the colors, how it's situated is, is a logo.
Can we put this thing, this question to the, to the province and ask, ask for a direct, no, we do not.
Didn't we?
No, we do not.
We did with the lawyer, and, you know, her statements, just as I've said, you know, again, whether we're trying to look for a fine line to allow him to use our logo, I don't know. Again, it's not my recommendation to council that we approve this. Simply looking ahead to Eastern Charlotte, I don't want to have to contend with somebody using the town logo and writing letters to the council of that day. We shouldn't, we shouldn't try to set up that council with that type of position.
Can we just put this to a vote? Because we can discuss this all night.
We'd have to, we'd have to vote it out of, correct, out of, out of where it's tabled, so...
Yeah, so how do we finish this off right now? Because we've been on it now 10 minutes, we're still nowhere.
Well, we spent 10 minutes on the diapers, I mean, we can actually discuss something here that...
Move the diapers.
No, I'm serious, I mean...
Yeah, motion to decline, I make a motion to decline this...
To decline, okay, so we have a motion to decline it?
And I second it.
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Thanks, Armstrong, sorry.
So, we have a motion to decline the, the letter of Mr. Alan Holmes, and it will have been seconded, and all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Or there's one vote? Okay, next one is, the proposed subdivision on Mount Pleasant Road, 112 Lot PIB 15188352, for small residential subdivision. Jason?
Thank you, Worship. So, this is what we refer to sometimes as the Avery Proposal, so this will be for the lot on Mount Pleasant. Certainly, as of right now, with the current sitting zoning bylaw, we would have to make an amendment to this current zoning bylaw, whereas council has now in their possession a draft of the new, new zoning bylaw, and is, we're looking at, meeting as soon as next week on discussions of that. I certainly would make the recommendation that we don't bring this forward this month, just considering that we could be looking at a new zoning bylaw perhaps by the end of, end of October, 1st of November.
So, you're suggesting we table it again until we have the zoning bylaw?
Correct, yes.
Can I ask you, what, what we had for the council was not the zoning, was the one about the municipal plan? So essentially, we are in a position right now to actually make a decision about the change to municipal plan to accommodate Mr. Avery.
We passed the new municipal plan?
We just passed the municipal plan. So, we are in a position to tell Mr. Avery, "Mr. Avery, you have a proposal that goes against our municipal plan, and you still, and you still can do your three houses that you want within the existing municipal plan, and give him that feedback." We, we are in a position to do that now.
I don't, I don't believe this goes against the, the current municipal plan that was passed here tonight, so it would, now we're looking at a zoning item. So, this is now a zoning item, we'd have to do amendment to the zoning plan.
But we first have to amend the municipal plan before we allow Mr. Avery to...
So, yeah, we don't have to amend the most of the municipal plan now.
So, I've, if I may, Your Worship, so, with regard to Mr. Avery's proposal, what CEO is saying is corrected, it's, now that you've gone ahead all the way through with your municipal plan, you really need to put his proposal on hold or defeat it, that would be your options. Because, hi, his proposal would be to amend the old municipal plan to do what, to do what he was setting it up to do. Now, with regard to what Jason was saying, with the current municipal plan, would you have to amend it to accommodate his request? No, if the request was done in a different way, but because the zoning bylaw may change, it also creates another uncertainty for him and his proposal. He's, he's applied to amend the former municipal plan and the current zoning bylaw, which may or may not be in existence in several months if council proceeds with the document you have in your desk. So, it leads a lot of, it leads a lot of uncertainty as to what would happen with his proposal. If you go to, to adopt it, and then you adopt this document, you might wipe out his rezoning. So, council has to think about this, and if you, if you're in a position to say no, you can defeat his request, or you can table it till you decide what to do with this zoning bylaw. What would hap, what he'd have to do is one of two things, if he was going to come back to, to have his proposal be considered by council, it would be, if this zoning bylaw's passed, he'd have to look at taking that property out of the agricultural zone and put in part of that property that he wants to subdivide into a rural settlement zone, which has certain lot size criteria. So, that would be something to look at for council, if you're thinking about to continue to entertain this proposal he's made. But he hasn't, he hasn't adjusted his request at all, so this is all basically conjecture from me to say what he might do. Because it's his application, and if he wants to change it, it's up to him. So, what you guys do with your bylaw, if you're proceeding with your zoning bylaw, his proposal will have to wait. And regardless, you, you've gone ahead with your municipal plan, so his municipal plan amendment basically is null and void at this point. So, his, the rezoning part of his request would have to be changed if he was going to, if council's going to continue to entertain it.
Alex, can I have some plain language answer here?
Sure.
In order to actually change a land zoning which contradicts or is contrary to an existing municipal plan, you first make a step to amend the municipal plan.
That would be right, yeah.
And after you amend the municipal plan...
Yeah.
You make a second proposal to amend the zoning.
Yeah.
Okay, so my question is, at any particular time, whether, whether before 7:00 today or after 7:00 today, we are now almost eight, almost 9:00, this town had a municipal plan?
Yep.
And what this gentleman is proposing is against that municipal plan. It requires a variance.
Yeah.
So, are we in a position now to tell Mr. Avery that this town would have liked to actually not take farmland out of the existing municipal plan, and he should consider getting his three houses that he wants from that property within the existing municipal plan zoning?
Yeah, and it's up to council to make that determination.
Correct.
So, you just said, the municipal plan that you adopted tonight doesn't allow for what he proposed.
Yes.
And you can make that statement. You could also look at, there's a section in the municipal plan which would allow for minor changes within those designation areas that doesn't require you to amend the municipal plan. So, if you consider it minor, then, then you could approve a rezoning without going back to the municipal plan and changing it, but you'd have to make that decision.
No, I'm saying, we are asking the expert to tell us if changing the zoning that is prescribed for that land from rural agriculture to residential by adding two lots and then a passway to the back, if that is a change in the municipal plan that we actually approved.
It, I would say, it depends. You'd look at what he's proposing, if it's multiple lots, if it's taking up the whole of the entirety of the parcel, I would agree, I wouldn't do it. And say, if he's going to do multiple lots and take up the entirety of that parcel, then he's looking at amending the municipal plan. If it's just a small corner, it's a decision you would have to make, but it may be acceptable. That would be what I would say.
My question to you again, and I like, like, who can, it may take a few minutes to actually, to actually understand that. Is there any step where the council can... Is there any step where the council can go back to Mr. Avery and say, "Mr. Avery, you came to our town, you invested your money to buy this lot, and you want to actually build three houses there." You can do that with the existing municipal plan that we just voted, that we want to not take farmland out of farm use and still have three homes. So is that, is that, is that something that, that the, the, the reason for which we vote a municipal plan is supposed to do, to actually tell the, the proponent that we do have a municipal plan with a certain zoning, and you can do what you want within the existing zoning?
Well, it, I mean, there's a lot in that question. It's hard to take.
Well, I'm trying to get an answer.
Yeah, yeah.
And, 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 you know, I'm, 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 I ask a direct question, and I try to get a direct answer. I get a complicated question, so I'm asking another complicated question.
I'll try my best. It is, it is complicated, that's the problem. So if I understand your question correct, you would say it, it, the municipal plan is, as you understand it, the one you adopted tonight would allow him to do three homes? Or you don't agree with that?
Well, I absolutely agree he can do three homes there.
Okay.
But he can do the thing while respecting a municipal plan that we just voted. Or the same municipal plan that was existing before we voted.
Gotcha, yep. I, I think it's possible. I think you could do it. But again, it would be how, how much of that lot would be taken up by, you know, a rural residential component that's not agricultural? And I think if it was limited and very small, then, then you, then you stay true to that policy of not allowing an intrusion of residential development into a, into an agricultural area. So that would be the thought, yeah.
I go back to the zoning bylaw that you just proposed, that says, you know, that you shall not have manure smelling next to a house, a residential house. You can have manure smelling next to a rural house, agricultural, because everybody expects to have a cow next to him, right?
Yep.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, is there a step for us to actually try to respect the municipal bylaw that we just voted?
Well, and, you know, this is a good question. So when it comes to the agricultural requirements around livestock and making sure that, you know, that the smells related to having livestock aren't causing significant nuisance to nearby homes, this is a question which we'll probably address in the workshop, and one which we can, you can look at council. It's council's bylaw, and you can amend it however you wish. So if you're concerned that having that rule related to smells and, and livestock is too prohibitive to do agriculture and does not respect the municipal plan, then you can amend it, you can take it out. The reason it would be in there is because, well, yes, we can do agricultural development in St. George. It is also still fairly close to a built-up area, and I wouldn't necessarily just rip the Band-Aid off of all rules and regulations that comes to having farms in, in the town and the built-up area, because you are going to have, you, you do have houses even down Mount Pleasant Street. You do currently. And we don't have any, we don't have any significant livestock operations. When we're talking about significant, like a hog barn, that could be a problem if it's located there. Having some farm animals and certainly having some pigs, probably okay. It's just making sure that the number is not going to be overwhelming and cause, you know, a big part of the community to, to have this very noxious smell. So I think that the thing is, you've got to make a decision of coun- as council. Do you want to really, really encourage a really intense agricultural zone right in the community? Or do you want to have the allowance for farm animals but have some pretty, you know, strong boundaries around how tense it gets? So it's a question you have to answer, and.
Right now, I don't know if Raymond Hall is there, he know that, if he wants to actually put up a, a pig farm there, he's entitled to do it, right?
Well, eh, yes, but you'd have to.
Not but, right now, he's entitled to do it.
You'd have to look at what the, the zoning bylaw would say.
Correct.
And if the zoning bylaw has no rules or regulations on it, it's, doesn't just end there. If the live, if the livestock operation meets the threshold of the Livestock Operations Act, then you're looking at licensing through that act. So it's not just zoning. Your zoning is your local rules that may go above and beyond the Livestock Operations Act. And Livestock Operations Act's definitely contemplating a very rural location, not within the Town of St. George boundaries. So generally speaking, your setback for Livestock Operations Act is like, it's, could be up to 200, could be in the extreme 600 meters from a residential dwelling. So what this is trying to do is say, in, in that area underneath the Livestock Operations License, so it's these very small farms that don't need the license.
Yes.
How do we regulate that?
Let me reverse the question. Is there any problem from us now telling to Mr. Avery or to Charlie that, Mr. Charlie, can you accommodate your plan within the existing planning zone? Because we do not have any reason for why you want this thing. Like, this is a fair question to ask Mr. Charlie, right?
Yeah, so with the current zone, the AR, you can do, you can do lots, one acre size, but I think in this case, he wouldn't have the frontage under the current zoning requirements to, to, to have separate lots. So if he's gonna do, if it was two lots plus the remnant, he would have to get a variance on one of those lot widths.
Three lots.
So three lots.
Three lots.
Yeah, that's just the terminology, so it would be, so, yeah, three lots, one of which would be the remnant.
He proposes, he proposes three lots.
Yeah.
He proposes three lots.
Yep.
He proposes three lots, and he can have these three lots within the existing municipal plan.
What he's proposing is not just three lots, it's, there is a configuration that he's proposing with frontage on Mount Pleasant.
For three lots.
For three lots with, with two houses, with two house lots having frontage on Mount Pleasant. That's, that is his proposal.
The third lot has a frontage on Mount Pleasant also, right?
Again, that is his proposal, it's not.
Yes, yes. So all I'm saying is, he has three lots fronting Mount Pleasant. He can have this, this plan within the existing municipal plan. Who can, who can actually say, you can have it, right? This, like, this is, this is the natural thing to do. I don't know why we are discussing, why we are discussing tabling something which is black and white. I mean, we had a municipal plan, we just put a new municipal plan, and we say, we have to, we, we would like to encourage keeping this thing agricultural. And all of a sudden, Mr. Charlie comes and says, "I want to put three lots there." And we say, "Yes, Mr. Charlie, by all means, put these three lots, you're allowed to do it. Why you're asking us to put residential lots there? So I can have the people that are complaining that smells?" But they, because they have the right, they bought their residential lot and it smells, and they don't like that. I mean, my rooster, they can hear it there. My rooster, they can hear it there. And if you look at your municipal plan, he should be silent. My rooster should be silent, because everybody's entitled to have quiet at night, right? So all I'm saying is, why we are tabling it? I don't get an answer from you, and I'm, 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 I'm starting repeating myself. Why you cannot say to Mr. Charlie, "What you are proposing can be accommodated with what you, what, what we just passed"?
Well, yeah, and what, what he proposed was a zone that was under, that's under your current zoning bylaw, which, if you look at the municipal plan, what would work in that municipal plan that you just passed would be the RS zone, not the zone he proposed. So you have a bylaw with a zone that, that's in your current zoning, but it's a, it's a residential-style zone. The one which I might suggest a council could work is the rural residential zone, the rural settlement zone, the RS zone, but he has not asked for that. That would work under municipal plan without amending municipal plan, but he has not asked for that. So that's why I'm suggesting.
But we, we, we are in a position to tell him that you can do that.
Yep.
And the second thing that I want to ask you is, we are three months away from being part of a larger entity. Okay? Have we have an obligation, moral and legal, to actually go to the other entity and ask them, "Do you really want to have residential lots within a, a, a rural zoning"? Because they do have a municipal plan too, right?
So you're talking about the next-door LSD?
The Funny Bay, yes.
The Funny Bay?
Yes.
Yep. So your, your question is to ask them what they would like to do?
No, I'm saying, right now, we have a municipal plan that we can actually adhere to. And the next, the next, the neighbor has also a municipal plan in the works, which also contemplates to keep the thing rural.
Well, on their side.
On their side.
Yeah.
Yes. So everybody seems to believe that this area should be staying rural.
Yes.
Okay, so why we don't say, "This is what is, this is what it is"?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
It is what it is. It is what it is. Why we don't say that thing to Mr. Charlie?
Yep, and, Mr. Mayor, I agree. That's what, I, maybe we are having a miscommunication with each other, because what I'm saying is that the zone that would work under the, your current, your new municipal plan is a different zone than what he's requested. He had requested one that would have made sense with the municipal plan amendment, but things have changed just tonight. So it's a bit confusing, but.
I don't see the confusion.
I, and maybe, maybe I'm the one who's having a hard time here, I don't know.
And, and, and the other thing which I mean, we can go back to which proposal he put, because he changed the proposal. But all the proposals, all the proposals require one thing, to change our municipal plan, which we had before, we have it now, and says, "No". So why we don't say, "It is what it is"?
Because you're, okay, so the current, the current zoning bylaw, which you have and which he zoned in, is called AR. And you can do these number of, these houses in the AR zone. You don't necessarily have to have a farm. You can have agriculture, you can have houses. And so as we talked about, he can currently in the AR do large lots, one acre, 54 meters of frontage.
Yes.
And that would be allowed. But he wouldn't have enough frontage to do what he wanted to do under the current zoning rules, okay? So with the potentially new zoning rules, he could have, he could look at the RS zone, which allows for smaller lots that connect to sewer and water. It's still rural in, it's still a rural zone. So that's the difference.
Well, okay, thank you, thank you. I just want to, I'm gonna ask the council. I understand that all the councils went and they actually talked to the people who are affected. And everybody, everybody now knows where we are, and they had a chat with, with neighbors on both sides, and they know where they are and what they are concerned about. So the question, the question that we have right now, we have to take our responsibilities and say, are we gonna say to Mr. Avery, "Mr. Avery, what you propose is not okay", and come back with a different one? Or we're gonna say, "Oh, we are not ready to discuss it yet"? So I'm, 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 I'm gonna put a propos-, I'm gonna ask for a motion to actually tell to Mr. Avery that this one here is unacceptable for the time being. He can come back, I mean, he can always come back. So I, 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 I want to ask if anybody would propose a motion to actually tell to Mr. Avery, what he has proposed is not according to municipal plan, and he can go back and put a new proposal? So. Any motion for that?
I'll make that motion. This is for him to, this is us rejecting it.
Rejecting it, yes.
And it gives him the option to reapply.
Correct.
Yes.
For that we have something that we can accommodate, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, and any questions about this? Of all the people who have.
So you're rejecting the original motion or the one that just came forward? The second one?
I was under the impression that.
Is the first one superseded by the second one?
That's a very good question, Councilwoman.
That's a good question, because that was my, that was actually why we had this conversation online. Yeah.
Because I don't understand, I don't understand when we know that, we know what has happened, we know what we have voted, and we have an opportunity to tell Mr. Avery, whether it's the first plan or the second plan, you don't meet the municipal plan that we just voted. Can you please go back and make another proposal? And maybe he can actually come back and tell us why he wants that? Why he wants that, that, that thing to go on the back and keep that, that, that land for a next step? Everybody has talked to the, to the, to the owners around, and he knows, so it's time to take our responsibilities. And, and, and I, we have a motion that has been seconded, and ask if there is any question. So the question is, is the first plan or the second plan? That's a very good question, because we had people who came to, to the, to the first plan, who had an open house, and now it has changed. But regardless what it is, the question is, can we tell to Mr. Avery, "Take this thing now and think about coming up with a different proposal"? Whether it's the first or the second.
The question would be whether we are currently on the first proposal or the second? The second proposal supersedes the first. He's allowed to change his proposal up to the point of council making a decision on it, or putting it to a first reading or a second reading. So as of right now, it would be the second proposal, that he's adjusted the lot sizes, they're the larger lot, lot sizes. So that is the proposal we have.
He's adjusted it by, by his warrant, but he hasn't adjusted it by his application. His application's still asking for the four, for the four separate lots.
No.
Yes, it is, it's right here.
So the application, he did ask for the, to amend his application to that. So what you see is the amended version of his application. So that is what he's communicated. Now, yeah, he could have maybe resubmitted the form, and that might have been clear, and, yeah, I see what you're saying, too.
Well, yeah, when you read it, it still says four. It doesn't say, and it, it doesn't say that it's changed, his picture's changed, but that's all.
Right. Yeah, which case, what I would, what I would suggest, if we were going down the road of, of actually considering for approval or not, would be to put terms and conditions on what is actually being approved, and it would just be the, what, what he's indicated you in the image, not.
Why, why do you do all these complicated dances? I'm just wondering. I mean, it's too complicated. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I do, I do, I should apologize.
You know, I never heard a citizen coming to a, to a government, and the government dancing around him. I'm dancing around to actually say, "Please, I'm gonna do what you, you, how to, gonna help you", you know? I never seen this kind of things happening. It's very regular. It's very regular for.
Your worship, I, I do think I should apologize. I think what, what happened here was the worst possible time to apply, to amend the municipal plan and zoning bylaw, because council was considering adopting a brand-new document for both. So in addition to that, given that the proposal was very controversial in nature, and he then amended his request, it then led to a lot of different confusion. And I think, given the state of this, it's not ready to be brought for, just as the clerk said.
So there is an option to actually clear the board.
Clear, you can clear the board.
Clear the board and say, "Mr. Avery, thank you very much for investing in St. George".
Yeah. Exactly. That would be, that would be, it's just, unfortunately, just a very confusing time to do this. And, you know, people are, are, were asking about rezonings, and at, at this point, I'm saying, you really kind of need to put a pause on, until council's had a chance to consider its new zoning bylaw, and we, we can, you know, I think it's going to be something you need to do in the next year, given the limited time also council has. So people have been, you know, they, there's always ideas floating around there, so I've suggested we really got to put a, a freeze on rezonings for the time being, just because it is too confusing to do right in the midst of the process.
Yeah, we can clear the board, so we don't have one more thing, you know, together with our, you know, the.
That, that is an option to you, and it's, it's really council's decision what you want to do.
Okay, so, so we have a motion, we have a motion which has been seconded about clearing the board, and, and.
One more question.
And, no. I say, we have a, we have, you have a question? Yeah, go ahead, please, please.
This document has to be done first, the rezoning.
Yes, because, because you adopt.
It just makes more confusion, that's all.
Exactly. And I do apologize for that. I think it's, it's very difficult to convey this, because you're talking about multiple processes on top of each other.
What you're saying then to us is that we should look at this before we really deal with this.
Because you've adopted a new municipal plan, yeah.
Because he could contradict.
Exactly.
Which goes back to the suggestion, did you see, I think I said to Jason earlier, "Maybe we should table that until we approve that"? And I know, we've got table basketball, and I'm not trying to put it off, I'm just and I'm not trying to put it off. I'm just saying that the way I listen to this, it sounds like we should table this until we approve that.
I'm sorry. We are still at the municipal plan level. We are still at the municipal plan level. We can have approved it under municipal plan and then reject the zoning, right? Like what we approve as a municipal plan, okay, we can approve it and then say on the zoning, this is not really minor. It's, it's, it's major. We have to go back.
Yeah.
So all I'm saying is, right now we have the municipal plan.
Yep.
Okay? And, and, and the issue of whether or not we're gonna amend the zoning by law or not in the life of this council is, is, is almost irrelevant. We have a municipal plan that we just voted and we have the basis to actually make a decision.
Yes.
Based on what we have right now voted and the existing zoning by law that the town still has. Like, would you not all of, all of a sudden became zoneless because we have not voted the amendments?
That's right.
We do have an existing zoning by law. So potentially today, we could have actually approved and say, yes, Mr. Avery, by all means, go ahead. And you have a zoning by law, I'm gonna put another hearing according to the zoning by law until we get a new zoning by law. So the, all these things about the zoning by law being an issue are red herrings in my book.
I, I don't, I don't agree. But I'm, I'm not sure if we're gonna be getting any more clarity tonight. It's a very complicated matter, but how do I summarize this easily?
I like clarity. That's a very good word. And I like clarity, yes.
The municipal plan, what I agreed with you in this point, the municipal plan does give you direction. So the one you're, the one you approved tonight, you can use to base your decision on. So if you feel that what he proposed wouldn't comply with the municipal plan that you adopted tonight, you can make your decision on that basis. And that would be appropriate and fine.
And this is what the two motions are, the one that we just seconded, yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So if that's where council wants to leave it, you, you can. And that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So we have a motion that has been seconded about, about telling Mr. Avery that his proposal is being rejected and, and, and send him back a letter thanking him for the proposal and explaining to him what he, I'm not sure if, did he, I'm not sure if we spent the time to educate him about what he can do, frankly, you know, I don't, he's a, he's a guy came from Ontario. He does not really know that he, maybe he can do what, what he wants to do with the existing municipal plan. There is, there is an opportunity to educate him in, in our, in our decision to tell him that what he proposes is not acceptable. So, yeah.
What happens if we, for example, table it? Does it die when the council's dissolved?
Yes.
It stops, doesn't it?
Yep.
To start, you're saying start all over? He'd have to reapply?
Basically.
Or whatever. Yes. With this new adoption or whatever we have.
Wow, something clear. Yeah. So we won't actually delay it until we die, so it will die with it?
Yeah, we're, we're going fast.
Or we can actually, or we can actually have a clear, a clear thing. We say, hey, this thing does not what this town wants. We won't actually try to respect the municipal plan that we just voted. It's not too radical.
I either think you either vote on it.
Yeah.
No, there's no explanation.
Yeah. Correct.
One or the other.
Yes. And then this is what they proposed. We have a motion to vote. We have a motion to vote, right? Correct? Yes.
The motion is to reject.
Yes. The motion is to vote and the proposal as is, is actually is not acceptable. Yes. That's the motion.
The motion is to reject.
When you don't accept the proposal, you reject the proposal. That's what the show is saying.
You can, you don't have to raise your voice. It's great.
So, can you please read us the motion, Jason?
So the motion made by Council Diderakis and seconded by Councilor Armstrong was to reject the so-called Avery proposal as it is.
Am I allowed to actually change the word to say not reject, but not approve?
It would only be the person who put table, put the motion, the councilor.
Do you mean by that, not approve? Or you want a rejection or something? I just want to understand. Question.
My, I, my, I thought that when we get an application, we have to look at it at face value and say whether we approve it or reject it. That's, is that, is that correct?
Correct. Actually, the, the, the best way to do this, and based on what I've seen looking at different case law, is to actually have the first reading of the by law and then have it fail. So don't give it first reading and it fails. That is your, your cleanest route to, to rejecting a proposal like this.
To not give it the shortest.
So put, put, make a mo, someone makes a motion to give first reading to the by law to rezone the property. And you could do the municipal plan amendment by law and then do not let it pass. So if you're voting all against it, you just don't let it go forward and it, it dies.
So if, 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 if we don't do anything today, it dies?
So yeah, if you, if you fail to give your first reading, because the, the thing that was, was tabled, if I understand, was the actual by law itself, right? So.
The proposal. It was the proposal.
The proposal, which is tied to the proposal, of course.
Which was the proposal, which was tied to the, to the municipal plan.
Of course.
To the municipal plan. So if, if, if we, if, if, if Council Ruben asked me to, to actually, I guess, no, it's not time to, 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 to adjourn yet. But if we don't do anything today, it just dies.
So you're, if, if the motion that was brought back to the table.
Oh, we put a motion. So let's go to the motion. Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to have the, to actually, because to me, there are too many semantics here. I don't get direct answers or clear answers. They are too convoluted. And right now we have reject, accept. To me, they are both the same. But, but the, the, the motion is to reject the, the plan as was put. It's a clear, it's a clear motion. It has been seconded. So let's go from the, the right.
I'm, I'm confused. I'm.
So you're allowed, yeah, you're allowed to do that.
I, I just think that if we're gonna be looking at zoning, then if this, if we pass this or don't pass it, then it's just contradicting each other, right? Is that the way I'm understanding that?
No. No.
So could you?
Okay. So we're gonna have a meeting to go over this more.
Yep.
Right? So if we go over this more, and you said before that this would, this would be worked into this, right? Is that the way I'm understanding that?
There would be a way to do it, but he has now requested to, to, to go to that zone.
Can we speak plain language? What this into this means?
So currently he's requested to go to a residential zone, which is under your current zoning by law.
She's asking him to change the municipal plan. Is that the first step?
But with that change, that would not work with the municipal plan you just passed tonight. The residential zone does not work.
Whatever.
So what, what he could do would be to come back with a, with a different zone, go, come back with a rural settlement zone, which would work under your new municipal plan. What he had proposed worked for the old regime. The, the new regime, the new municipal plan has a different type of zoning that he would need to go under in order for his proposal to be approved. And he hasn't.
Well, then there seems no point in voting on it.
That's right.
If, if we're doing it under the new municipal plan which came into effect tonight, then why are we voting on it now?
Right.
When is the poor man.
But we also had the option to vote it, for it. When was it? At the last council meeting? Before this was even on the.
We've changed the municipal plan.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm sorry.
You've got me all confused, John.
No, I'm, 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 actually, that's why I got the expert here to actually give us plain language and not speak about what I changed this into this. There is, there is, there are, in my book, there is a municipal plan, which is a government document. He came.
Let me ask a question here. This is the old girl that's, her mind is just gone.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Right now, we've passed our municipal plan. Correct. So we got a new municipal plan. That's number one. The Avery proposal that I saw, and if I'm wrong, somebody here correct me. He is proposing two larger lots at the front of his property and a third lot, which would be where his house is, and the back half of the property still to remain agriculture or hayfield or something. Am I correct in assuming that?
No, no. He's proposing a change, an amendment to our municipal plan to allow what.
Oh, I've lost it. I'm, I'm, I just, the, the proposal that I looked at said he went to two larger lots. First, he was gonna put three across the front, which we all said was too many, correct? Then he come back and he said, I'm gonna put two larger lots on the front next to the road. And they're gonna be, what is it, ninety by a hundred and sixty or a hundred and fifty. There'll be a driveway. Is that not correct? I don't, no, just like.
I'm a little out of order. I'm sorry. The question.
Okay, I'm out of order. That's it.
I'm seriously, I mean, right now the question is, we had a proposal. We had a proposal.
I'm just trying to understand the proposal.
Okay, can you please read us the proposal, Alex? Read us the proposal because there is confusion about what is the proposal that we are voting.
It is unfortunately just terribly confusing. And this is why.
No, no, it's something like, it's so terribly confusing. I'm saying, read us the proposal.
We do still have a motion on the floor as of right now.
Yeah.
So I guess the, the question that we need to be asked is to, does council support rejecting the proposal? That is.
What proposal? That's the question that I hear.
The proposal that is currently tabled by Mr. Avery.
What's that proposal? Can you please read us the proposal? You see, we say this proposal in plain language is the one that will held the open house.
Proposal is.
Ah, it's a different proposal. Okay.
So the proposal is to subdivide a property into four separate lots, three lots under residential and one lot remaining agriculture rural.
Thank you.
The current application as it is on the application.
Okay. So it was, it was for four lots. The, the proposal that we, that we have to actually accept or reject is for four lots. And we have a motion to reject the proposal. So I cannot put it more than clearly. We had a proposal for four lots. And we have a motion that has been put on the floor to actually vote for or against the proposal. So, Councilor.
But he changed it to two.
That is the proposal.
Please, the C A O that will pay him big bucks, she knows what the proposal is.
Calm yourself down, your worship. I am sorry. I am asking a question. And now I'm ugly and I'm upset. This, you gave us this, right? And.
Not this, please. Not this. We have a proposal. He just, he just, you want to read again, please, because just be clear. Can you please read the plain?
Okay, why is it saying four?
This is the council package, current application. It's the application that we have. So the wording may not necessarily match.
All the words that don't match the mask now.
Counselor Armstrong addressed that earlier. So once again, the proposal is to subdivide the property into four separate lots, three lot, three lots under residential and one lot remaining in agriculture. That is the proposal for the wording. So the vote would be, does councilors support rejecting? So if you are a councillor, you support rejecting that proposal? That's what should be called.
Okay, thank you. So is it clear now that we are voting for what we are voting? I think we are. So the, the, the proposal is to reject the proposal for having four lots. In plain language, not this into this, not this into that, plain language. We had a proposal that was just read for third time and we have to, to actually make a decision. There is a motion on the floor. Councilor Allison.
I am not in favor of four lots. No, I am not.
No, Councilor Allison, do you approve the proposal or do you reject the proposal? There is a motion. Do you vote for the motion, for or against the motion?
I'm against the four lots.
So you, you, you are, so she said you're voting for, you're voting to reject?
For the four lots, yes. But that's not what he, the next proposal.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Ruben.
Yes, reject.
Okay. Councilor Kulte.
Reject the four lots.
Councilor Leslie.
I reject the four lots.
Yeah. Councilor Diderakis.
I reject the four lots.
And Deputy Mayor.
Reject the four lots.
Thank you. The, the, the proposal has been rejected. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Alex. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. We are moving on to correspondence, letter from Mr. David Armstrong regarding road safety. Which date later is that? Just because I don't have my, my package with me.
Your worship, this is a correspondence from Mr. David Armstrong dated August the twentieth, twenty twenty-two, just in regards to complaints regard as, regarding reckless driving, off-road vehicles on streets, illegal vehicles being driven, underage drivers, illegal vehicles being driven on non, non motorized walking trails, and excessive loud vehicles causing disturbance. The correspondence has been distributed.
I have to say that I don't understand what this council expects us to do about this. We are not police officers. We're not Department of Safety. And we don't stand on the road and dish, dish out speeding tickets. I, I'm sorry. I don't understand this.
Any other comment?
I don't understand it either. I mean, I think that perhaps, it's gonna sound terrible when I say this, but I'm gonna say it. The, the situation has been made worse by the constant harping of the speed on Riverview Avenue. I don't know of a town, a village, a city, a rural community that doesn't have a speeding problem. I think we've done our due diligence in that we've gone to the RCMP, we've sent forth anything and everything. The RCMP had came down on Riverview Avenue. They interviewed people. Other than, as Deputy Mayor says, you want us to stand out behind a tree with a radar gun and, and try to find out who's speeding? I, I don't know what we're gonna do. I just think that this constant back and forth, that the council's gonna have somebody meet with a terrible accident on Riverview Avenue. There's other streets in the town of St. George that have speeding problems. There's other thing, other, I, I just don't know what, that they want us to do. I mean, if the RCMP can't stop them, how is the town councillor and the mayor gonna do it?
Can I ask that?
That's all. I just don't understand what, what Mr. Armstrong wants us to do. I mean, we've done, we've reported it to the RCMP. We've put up speed signs. What else can we do?
I don't think the situation's becoming worse because Armstrong is writing us letters. The situation is not great.
No, I, I don't disagree with you that it's becoming worse. I'm just saying, what can we do? Because this is the letter, August the twentieth. We got another letter today or September the twelfth. We have another letter from Mr. Armstrong saying to Mayor and Council. And by the way, I didn't get that letter. I was sent to it by the C A O. So I guess I've suddenly dropped off the face of the earth as a councillor. But I'm just saying, yes, I understand his concerns. And I wouldn't want to see anybody get hit on Riverview Avenue. But what more can we do? We've, we've sent it to the RCMP. Councilor Armstrong has said, you know, like, the RCMP should be more present on Riverview. What does the man want us to do? Can you tell us?
Jason, can I ask you, this letter is the one that we're not having with me.
This one. This, this, this is the one that you said, can you see that?
This, this letter goes to more, more things because she talks about what's happening at the Adventure Center, right? She talks about the Adventure Center. I mean, there are a lot of lists here. Speeding is one thing. But there are, so what, what, what I would suggest, what I would suggest, because something, like he, he brings in other issues more than the speeding. He brings about the Day Adventure Center, which I heard several complaints about what's happening there at night. And maybe there is an opportunity to actually sit down with him and understand where he's going, what, 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 what he expects us to do. Because that letter brings, yeah, it's different. It's not the speeding one.
No, no, I didn't get that letter is what I'm trying to tell you today. It wasn't sent to me. The C A O handed it to me just before the meeting or sent me an email and I read it. Yes, there are other things besides speeding. There's noise and, and there's down at the Day Adventure Center. But what more?
None of which we have any control of.
Yeah. What more can we do? I mean, we're not police officers. We're, I mean, we've, we've sent it to the police. Is there something else that we're missing as a council? Maybe somebody from the audience can tell us what we're missing.
No, no. I mean, what I would suggest, because some of them, there are, there are issues which are municipal, like, you know, I mean, the Day Adventure Center and what's happening there. I mean, so maybe we should have a chat with him and tell him what, what, what we can do. I mean, and what he thinks that we are missing. I mean, I, I, I don't know what he, he believes that, how can we force what's happening there at ten o'clock at night, for example. There are, there are complaints. Many people are complaining about the noise and drugs and all that, but, but.
What can we do if we send it to the RCMP? We're not ourselves. We can't go out and do anything. I mean, is there a suggestion?
There's a lot of questions that council has for Mr. Armstrong. He has raised some of his concerns. So I think matching his concerns with some questions as the mayor is, is, is looking for is perhaps setting up a meeting with Mr. Armstrong, with council to, to review his concerns and maybe perhaps address some of the municipal points in these.
I think that's a good idea. To actually just sit with him and.
Yeah, because I don't know what more we can do with the RCMP. They aren't paying attention to it.
I mean, we, we engage with local residents and other things. So it's, you know, we can actually meet him and see what he thinks that we should be doing, that we are missing. So Jason, can you please, I mean, yeah, we can set up a meeting. I mean, and, and I will attend. Everybody can attend. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's just, we just don't know what else we can do.
Okay. We have a letter from Miss Lisa Mackay regarding proposed by law. I think that's obsolete now, isn't it? And we have public presentations and appearances, members of the public. No one is here. No one is here, good. And we have statements of members by council. Wow, it's 10 o'clock, 9:30.
It's our turn.
Said you listed a lot of other stuff, now it's our turn.
Right. Counselor Allison?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out to music on Thursday nights, it was well represented, everyone had a good time. We made over, almost close to $4,000 for the food bank this year, so I think it was great. Also, Curl for Cancer is going to be taking place on October the 1st, it's the 20th Annual Walk. It's going to take place at the Day Adventure Center in St. George and Guardian Drugs in St. Stephen. Registration time will be 9 o'clock in the morning, the walk starts at 11:00 and all the proceeds go to Charlotte County Cancer. If anybody would like any more information, contact Winnie Pauls, she would be delighted to give any information out. And I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening.
Counselor Ruben?
I'm good. I've heard enough.
No comments.
Counselor Allison?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening and I'd like to just say that the, the New Coastal Link is, is a lovely place to have your evening or morning walk and there's been a lot of activity on there. I've seen children with their rollerblades, skateboards, bicycles and so on, so I think that it's gonna be quite successful, for sure.
Maybe just for council to consider with the tax, with the tours in Levy, with the needs for the baseball field, if we could allocate some of those funds, so...
Okay, Council, can you consider it next time? Yeah? Yeah? Deputy Mayor?
No, I haven't, but I think Brenda needs credit for doing all the music nights, she's the lady that arranged all the music nights, they were a huge success, we may never have music nights again, once we don't...
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure that we...
But she deserves the credit, she deserves all the credit for setting it all up for the year, so she deserves that credit.
I'm of some...
No, because she's the one who gets all the artists.
Yeah, I just want to actually inform everybody that we had a meeting with, with Executive of the Horizon last Friday, while everybody was partying, we had a meeting here, Jason was here, the Mayor of St. Stephen attended and we discussed the situation of primary health care in, in, in our community, the lack of doctors and we had, we had an opportunity to actually ask, to, to inform about some work that as a regional service commission has done, we had a committee that looked at their primary health care of, in, in Charlotte County and southwest New Brunswick, so we passed on this information and they told us that there is also another committee that working on, on primary health care that we did not know about it officially. So they advised us to actually get together and form like a southwest New Brunswick, south, I mean, Charlotte County, common front representation and go and have a second meeting. So, I'm hoping that something positive can come out of this for, for primary health care. And that's all for, 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 for me. And with that, further ado, I need a motion to, well, I mean, we have a next regular meeting on October 11th, just so everybody knows, but, and a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
She didn't understand.